Mr. President.
Please rise for the Pledge of Imocation by Councilmember Gary Gernant.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the Council's permission, I would just like to say to Steve Omaha on behalf of our group, appearing in the work that we do for you, I'd like to wish you a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Our holiday season here starts next week, so there won't be any meetings for a couple of weeks. We've certainly had our ups and downs in 2014, and hopefully, and we perfectly look forward to a more up in 2015. I think it's time to do the city's business.
City Clerk certified publication of daily record on December 12th, notes for repeat council and regular city council meeting December 16th, 2014, and current copy of open meetings act posted in white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of the issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the form of decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices.
Before we get started, we're going to announce that Agenda Item Number 12, which is the Resolution Concerning Maria Sangria's CEO, will be held at the last of the council meeting. We'll do the other stuff first, so it'll be laid over to last. Resolutions rate preliminary plats, plats and subdivision agreements. Item Number Five, resolution plat entitled Rivers Edge Park located northwest of 230th Street and West Maple Road is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on Number Five is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Lang.
Thank you. Jim Lang, 11718 Nicholas Street, here for the applicant Frank Creachy. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Will you approve?
Roll call.
Jerem Milton, Paul Thompson, Gernat Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item Number Six, resolution that preliminary plat entitled Northern Hills Estate III, generally located east of 69th and Plum Streets, with a request for a waiver regarding sidewalks along detached conditions, hereby accepted. The preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on Number Six is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Mark Westergaard with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street. This is the third and final phase of the Northern Hills Estates project. There's been two phases done before. This is an additional 21 lots, very similar to the other two phases. We've read the planning commission report and agree with the conditions, so we request your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Will you approve?
Roll call.
Jerem Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gernat Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Six is adopted, seven to zero. Item Seven, resolution preliminary plat titled Walton Edition located southeast of 252nd and Blondo Street along attached conditions, hereby accepted. Preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on Number Seven is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Thielen.
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street, Omaha 68154, here on behalf of the applicant. More than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Will you approve?
Second.
Roll call.
Jerem Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gernat Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Seven is adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7/8, due to no meetings being held December 23rd and December 30th, Agenda Items Number Eight and Nine shall be laid over four weeks to July 13th, 2015. Liquor, Item Number 10, candlelight bar, or candlelight lounge, 5031 Grover Street. Classy liquor lights. New application, old location.
Public hearing on Number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Travis Saint, 2127 North 167th Circle.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Will you approve?
Roll call.
Jerem Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gernat Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item Number 11, Omaha Tap House 1403, Foreign Affairs. Request permission to appoint Jacqueline Peck manager.
Public hearing on Number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
I'm Jacqueline Peck. I'm an assistant manager at the Omaha Tap House, and I live at 14623 Jefferson Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Brian Musser, 16123 Parker Street, general manager, Omaha Tap House.
Thank you. Other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Second.
Roll call.
Jerem Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gernat Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Consent Agenda. Any member of City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by City Council meeting following the consent agenda in the order in which they are removed unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearing on Agenda Item Number 13 was held on December 9th. Roll call.
Jerem Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gernat Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
13 is passed, seven to zero.
Public hearings on Agenda Items Number 14 through 22 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the Agenda Item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. See none. Public hearings are closed.
Will you approve?
Roll call.
Jerem Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gernat Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
14 through 22 are adopted, seven to zero. Item Number 23, ordinance for sending ordinance number 39456, passed September 18th, 2012, approving a tax and refinancing redevelopment agreement with TD Ameritrade Service Company. A is an amendment of the whole.
Public hearing was held on December 9th.
Will you approve?
Roll call.
Jerem Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gernat Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Amendment of the whole is passed, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7/8, the third reading and public hearing on Agenda Items 24 through 28 shall be held on January 6th. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7/8, the third reading on Agenda Items Number 29 through 32 shall be held on January 6th. The public hearing on these items are today. Item Number 29, ordinance to amend Section 53, 1 through 11 regarding subdivision regulations. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on Number 29 is today. Are there any proponents? See none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Gernant.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bunsen.
Dave Hamble, City Planning.
This ordinance, there's a proposal here to amend eight parts of this Chapter 53. And our planning committee was briefed on these changes, and this is a culmination of how many groups got together and talked about these changes?
A handful. City Planning, City Public Works, MUD, and a few of the engineering folks, engineering groups in town that represent the development community.
And this is part of the department's ongoing dialogue to continue to do preventive maintenance on our system. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. You're correct, yes.
Okay. And just in a Cliff Note fashion, would you please, for the benefit of those here and out in TV land, you know, so when they may be seeing, oh, they're amending some of these things, what does that all mean?
Yeah.
In layman's terms, if you would, just a Cliff Note version?
And I'll try to be quick. A lot of the text changes in the code revision are housekeeping items, make things easier to read, take out a few words here, you know, and there, but nothing substantial changes there. We, there's some changes in the code dealing with, after we worked with MUD and the Public Works Department where certain utility easement should be in relationship to corner lots, we clarified that. We clarified some definitions as far as private ways and courts. With technology these days, when we receive applications from the development community and their attorneys and engineers, there used to be a greater number of hard copies of plats and applications that were required to be submitted on submittal date. Since we now disseminate that information electronically, there's no reason to have as many copies as we once had. We heard from the development community and their engineering group that the timing on when we needed Mylar for final plats as opposed to paper copies, so we relaxed that requirements. There's some code changes to when public improvements have to be installed, the timing once the second, the engineer, city engineer signs a final plat for a second time. And another change was, those improvements under the code before these revisions, that time clock started ticking once the City Council approved. And I want to be clear, the City Council still approves final plats, but that clock doesn't start to tick until the city engineer signs the final plat for a second time, and that's after council acts on it to start putting in those public improvements. Some things, sometimes there's a delay once council approves the final plat and before their public plans are ready to go out to bid and start to be constructed, so we...
In all fairness...
Absolutely, yeah.
That clock should start.
Yeah. And that's Cliff Notes, that's generally what's in this Chapter 55 amendment.
Okay, all right. I appreciate the indulgence of my colleagues in doing this, but I thought it was only fair that those that aren't here today had an opportunity to know. Yes, housekeeping, but in what direction and why did it get started? And I, for one, personally appreciate the ongoing dialogue, especially when we're doing preventive maintenance on a very large system of government.
Sure.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, and thank you for the planning committee's review of that item. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you. After I'm listening to the dialogue, I wish we'd just take a look back when we sent a number of items to the voter on our city charter changes. And as I reviewed those, I saw a lot of the same thing, housecleaning, and it was explained to me by the clerk that to clean it up, to clean the charter up, you needed to do that. But I'd just like to have you reflect, we spent about $80,000, I think that's approximate dollars, on basically the same things. Now, we could have let, we could have changed that at this level, but we chose as City Council to spend approximately $80,000, I know, to clean up the charter, but I just think it's interesting sometimes how this stuff works out. Thank you.
Thank you. Now for the lights, next item.
Item 30, ordinance to car and accessory appropriating property located at 2210 Ohio Street within the OIC redevelopment plan area for subsequent use for construction of new single-family homes.
Public hearing on Number 30 is today. Are there any proponents? See none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 31, ordinance approving redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with 1701 LLC to implement the Coates Park Tax and Refinancing Redevelopment Project Plan with contemplate 23 new and rehabilitated homes to continue infill housing efforts in northeast Omaha.
Public hearing on Number 31 is today. Proponents, please. Ms. Hadley.
Bridgette Hadley, City Planning, excuse me, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? See none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 32, ordinance to approve an agreement with David Mann to provide funding for contractual position of certified juvenile fire prevention specialists.
Public hearing on Number 32 is today. Are there any proponents? See none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7/8, Agenda Item Number 33 shall be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7/8, the third reading of public hearing on Agenda Items 34 through 40 shall be held on January 13th. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7/8, the second reading of public hearing on Agenda Items Number 41 through 44 shall be held on January 6th. Now back to Item Number 12. Resolution that effective three days after adoption of this resolution, any certificate of occupancy issued for the premises operated by Maria Sangria, 302 South 11th Street, or any other business conducted on these, on those premises is hereby revoked for reasons set forth herein.
Thank you. Public hearing on Number 12 is today. Before we get started, as I think most in the room know, this is a bit of an unusual public hearing process from our usual course of action, so I have a statement to read up about that, and we'll proceed from there. This hearing is for the purpose of determining if the planning director appropriately found that a nuisance exists at this business and the business has failed to abate the nuisance as directed. The resolution, if adopted, supports the finding and revokes the business's certificate of occupancy. Proponents of the revocation will present their testimony and evidence first, followed by the testimony and evidence against revoking certificate of occupancy. After each proponent's testimony, a representative of the business may ask a witness questions. And I think it's been explained, we'll have one person appointed to do those, to ask those questions, and I think that's understood by the representative of the proponents and opponents. The witness is not compelled to answer, but a refusal to answer may be taken into consideration when the council members consider the testimony. Questions must be relevant and not be abusive with the witness. I think last time, things got a little bit heated on both directions, and that's something we're going to avoid today. Council members may be recognized at any time to ask a question of the witnesses as we proceed here, and after all testimony has been received, the council will consider our motion if made. So at this point, we'll hear from the proponents on Number 12.
We do have documents submitted by Thomas Mumgarde, Deputy City Attorney, and documents submitted by the attorney representing Maria Sangria.
Tom Mumgarde, Deputy City Attorney, I'll explain just very quickly what you have and how this is going to proceed. As you know, this is a second hearing on the certificate of occupation, certificate of occupancy question, and it's now back before the City Council after being remanded by the district court to provide the business an additional opportunity to defend the claims against it. So what you have here today is, I've submitted a packet of material, and my record will consist of all of the testimony that was provided at your August hearing, 2014 hearing, that's been typed up into a transcript, along with all of the exhibits from that hearing. You've had those before. In addition, I've given you a packet of about a dozen additional exhibits showing activity that's occurred since your August hearing. The business has agreed that the witnesses that appeared at that time on behalf of the city do not need to repeat their testimony. Their testimony is now before you, either in the transcript of that hearing and/or the transcript of a hearing that was held before the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission back in October. So I'm not going to, on behalf of, in support of the resolution, I'm not going to submit or have any additional testimony from the city. There may be some other people who wish to testify in support of the resolution, but I will present all of the city's evidence in that documentary form. I believe you've also received some transcripts of testimony from the business, and they can call witnesses and testify as they wish, and I would answer any of your questions if you have any at this time.
Thank you. And would the representative of the business like to ask Mr. Mumgarde any questions at this point?
No.
Thank you. Any other proponents today of the revocation? See no other speakers? Opponents of the revocation?
Mark Jacobs of Anderson, Bresman, Hoffman, 11440 West Center Road, on behalf of the business Puerto Santo Maria, doing business as Maria Sangria, and its owner, Maria Scalise, will not be calling any witnesses today. I have presented transcripts of testimony of Orville Townsend and Maria Scalise that was given before the Nebraska Liquor Commission in October of this year, and if I may, I would just like to make a statement advocating for my client.
Sure.
Thank you. Council members, you've received several written documents today, exhibits, transcripts, hundreds of pages. 171 of those pages you have not seen before, they were taken in October of 2014. 90 of those pages include the testimony of my client and the other proponent for Orville Townsend. In those transcripts, I think you will find responses to many of the concerns that I heard you raise at the last City Council meeting. I was not present for that meeting, I have viewed it through the video. One of the main concerns, and what I think you will find in there, is that my client has taken many steps to address what the city has deemed a nuisance. What you won't find in there is additional incidents, disturbances, since August 23rd of this year. In fact, you will find only one disturbance in the last six months. As this council already knows, other than revoking my client's certificate of occupancy, it also has the option to suspend or direct other such remedies as the council finds appropriate. I will conclude by asking the council to please review all of the transcript and exhibits that you've been received, that have been received today, taking into account that there's been an absence of disturbances over the last four months, that there's only been one in the last six months, that you've asked my client to abate any nuisance, and I believe that is certainly evidence of them doing so. And I would ask you to consider a remedy other than revocation of my client's certificate of occupancy. Finally, I would ask that you postpone voting on this matter until you've had the opportunity to go through all of the written testimony and exhibits presented to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents to the revocation that wants to speak today? See none. Public hearings closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Mr. Kratz. In light of the new pages that council for the establishment has offered, should we take a short recess to go into exec to consider this document so we don't have another procedural challenge as a threatened or pending litigation claim?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. First of all, I think you've been provided with that testimony earlier in the day, and I suspect some, if not all, of you've had the opportunity to read it. Secondly, a short break might be advisable for those who haven't had a chance to look through it. I'm not sure if we need to do it in executive session. I think we could just simply take a break, and the members that haven't read it can look at the transcript and then come back and vote.
Okay, that would be my motion.
Motion for a short break? Right. Motion or executive session? No. Just motion to go ahead. Motion for recess. Okay. Just motion in a second. Roll call. How long? You want to do 10-minute recess? Why don't we do 20? 20 minutes? Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President. Yes. We're in recess for 20 minutes. Let me tell you.[1436.52]
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're in recess for twenty minutes. Let me tell you. (pause) Mr. President? Yes. Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.